Han and Clara will let us know and we'll try to accommodate. As far as the public, tonight, we're going to keep this to the groups that we've mentioned. But I will assure the public, if the public is listening, this is going, the intent tonight is to have the input from the three groups to give staff directions so they can draft an ordinance that then can be commented on by the public. So there'll be a public hearing at a planning commission meeting in February with the intent being that then we would introduce that ordinance and have two readings, again, at which time the public, we would encourage the public to comment. So the public will have at least three opportunities to comment, but tonight, the intention is just to go over the draft ordinance and give staff the direction they need to complete an ordinance that can be then commented on by the public. And again, this is an ordinance for the city of Phoenix Falls, it's not talking about any particular project, although we all know that there is a proposed project that has led us to this conversation. But again, tonight's discussion is more about the ordinance that the city should have on our books and as opposed to any particular project. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our city planner, Darren Riley, to lead us in the discussion of the draft ordinance we all have a copy of.
Okay.
Good evening Darren.
Thank you. Yep, okay. Claire, do you want to go to page 10? So the first nine pages that are in the packet are called the clean version, which would be the which show the edits approved in there, so you're reading a clean version. What I'm going to go through first is the red line version, which show our existing ordinance with anything that's blue or red on here being newly added, or if it's stricken, deleted from the code. So again, anything that's in black text would be existing. So that being said, let's see here, what we got, okay. Can, our first, I guess, major discussion points would be on the next page. Part E, there we go. Yeah, so basically, let's stop here. Can you zoom in a little bit, make that, yeah, okay. So some of the first updates obviously would be requiring that a solar farm would be a conditional use permit in the RA zone, and then meeting the standards set forth in 154.138, which is our conditional use standards that all CP, projects that require CP would need to follow. That's really the only major update on this page. The next one. So this specifically gets into solar, like say on a residential use, so like your own personal home, that would be looking to put a solar panel, say, on the roof or in the backyard. These requirements are what you'd be following there. So this is kind of broken out, is there solar standards, the first part is, except, kind of those accessory uses for, say, you're dwelling, where our first kind of, some edits in here would be on part E, where we updated some language to say, you know, we don't use the terms, our administrator, we use a building official and city planner, so just some cleanup language within there, whom is getting the applications. Then, as part of some more requirements, just again, on part one and two, just what we're looking for for plans in terms of, you know, drawings, where it's going, that kind of thing. Again, on your home, it wouldn't be something that would be coming to planning commission and council unless there was a variance required there. Otherwise, that would be just a permitted accessory use to your, say, dwelling or whatever structure you have. Three, again, is just more things regarding, you know, components be UV or UL listed, clients with the building code, clients with electrical code, et cetera. Then the bottom part is where solar farms start. Again, so everything you see in red would be added. Here specifically, we're saying that solar farms be a conditionally permitted in the RA zone only. And then going through that the application be submitted for, just to get other conditional uses that we have that are out there, what is required, kind of a little bit of a process there. Then it gets into the next page, some of the standards that we'd be looking for specifically for solar farms. So part A gets into height. Again, nothing changing there, just specifically talking about the ground mounting for solar farms. Setbacks in part B. This is a little bit of a change here in that with the intent that we have a 40-foot setback to the outside perimeter property line of the project area. This is to acknowledge that there might be multiple parcels within a project, not so that there isn't a property setback within an interior property line. So if it spans across multiple parcels, we'd be looking at the exterior property line, and that would be 40 feet. Road right of ways, 40 feet as well, and then a housing setback of 150 feet, except that it may be reduced by 50 feet if it's fully screened from the setback point. And that, that written agreement is then recorded and put on the property deed, so that way any future owners would know that there is that reduction that was done as part of permitting this project.
And that's 50%.
Excuse me, 50%, so that'd be 75 feet. So 150 feet is a standard 50%, so that'd be a 75-foot setback. And then again, setbacks, we're measuring from the edge of the solar array to our setback. See, there was some updates as well on communication distribution lines. I will add, a lot of this language came from the model solar ordinance for Minnesota. Some of it came from other entities that have language on solar farms as well. So some of this, like for instance here, coming from one of the two. Talking about power communication lines running between the banks of the solar panel, may be placed above ground, if either no higher than the top of the solar module. But then other lines should be buried unless there are instances where there's bedrock, watercourses, or other natural landscape features, which would prohibit the burying of lines. D and E, nothing really changing there. Quiet an engineer to be signing off on some of the mounting equipment. Abandonment. Adding in Artoke County, solid waste ordinance needs to be followed. And then removing structures, so a little bit, just a little bit of an expansion on the abandonment. Fencing, adding a little bit of fencing, saying that it may have a fence located on the property line, but use of wildlife-friendly fencing, including the clearance at the bottom, is preferred, no barbed wire fencing to be used.
Because, did you read that, the language around the wildlife-friendly fencing, it says preferred?
Yep. So, so the language, I'll just read it, the security fence maybe may surround the perimeter of the solar farm and maybe locate up to the property line, the use of wildlife-friendly fencing standards that include clearance at the bottom is preferred, in, is preferred. So, and then no, no use of barbed wire allowed on perimeter fencing.
So when we have language such as is preferred in an ordinance like this, is that, does that come from the model ordinance? Or what kind of, I mean, is there?
Fencing, perimeter fencing, that includes barbed wire, woven wire designs, and fencing shall preferably use wildlife-friendly fencing standards that include clearance at the bottom. Alternative fencing can be used if the site is incorporating negative. So they use preferred in the model. And they use no barbed or woven wire designs, and shall preferably use wildlife. That's how the model reads. And we went into screening. Added some language in terms of screening requirements. Again, reiterating the 150 feet of an existing dwelling. Unless you have that reduction with the screening, then it can go down that 50%. Screen is encouraged along public roadways as deemed practical and not to disturb the function of solar modules. Screen make assist of vegetation or buring. Landscape screen improvements. So here's number two, this came from another example. This is one where, again, with a conditional use permit, we can discuss if this is still needed. Landscape screen improvements will be installed prior to all other above-grade improvements and confirmed by C inspection. Ground covers, this establishment of vegetative ground cover would be required, which be maintained until the site is no longer opable and decommissioned. And then specifically, the site shall provide native perennial vegetation or forage habitat beneficial to game birds, songbirds, and pollinators to be acceptable for disturbed areas within the project area. And then we put in here just a, an X to discuss a percentage of the disturbed area to be required to be planted in native species, unless deemed to have an adverse effect on solar panel function. And then also then added to, obviously, establish ground cover to reduce stormwater runoff and establishing perennial habitat and beneficial foraging habitat. And then the solar owners shall use native plant species and seed mixes under the Department of Natural Resources Prairie Establishment and Maintenance Seminary for solar projects. Part N is just adding that stormwater and NPDS permits. Obviously, they would be required for any project that disturbs X amount of land. So if they need that, be requiring that and set that to the city's part of the project. Site plan required, again, just adding that site plan showing solar arrays, structures, property lines, right of ways, service roads, floodplains, wetlands, just all the things we're looking for on the site plan for anything that's submitted. And then lastly, aviation protection, so again, this is if anything is proposed within 500 feet of an airport, they would need to do some study on glare for any sort of, obviously, issues that might come up there. So that is what we have in terms of, as you've seen, mostly additions to what we currently have.
Sure. So maybe what we'll do now is just kind of walk through and allow the council, the planning commission, and the National Resource Advisory Committee to make any comments and have some discussion and give you the feedback that's needed. I'll just, I'll start out, there's two things that I wanted to bring up. First was just that language in the fencing, I don't know what the language should be, but it seems to me like if we have a preference of what kind of fencing, we should put language that directs more than encourages. And I don't know that we want to, I think the language now that says wildlife-friendly fencing is preferable is kind of vague. If we want wildlife-friendly fencing, I think we should say that we require wildlife-friendly fencing. And if they, for some reason, that's not practical, then they would require a variance, that would be my thoughts. If we, if there's something that's preferred, I think we should say that that's what we expect to have happen. And again, that's just, that's my thought. Same, same, my only other comment is same on the ground cover. And I think you have that page up where you have the, I think it's in, I'm not an expert on solar farms, but I know that a good majority are completely covered in native plantings, and I think that's best for all parties involved, including the owner of the solar. I mean, the less maintenance, I mean, native grasses don't require much, very little maintenance, from what I understand. And I know that a number of other solar projects have incorporated, I believe 100%, so I mean, if, I think, we need, again, to be clear that that's what, you know, we want to promote the perennial vegetation. I don't think we, I don't think in the ordinance we put anything less than the 100%. And again, if any project, if that's not practical for a project, we don't want to stop a project, but we also want to set the expectations of, you know, that are beneficial to everyone. And if a project, any particular project isn't able to meet that for whatever reason, then we can always grant a variance, but I think setting the bar high of what we expect, especially if we're, you know, we're working with a number of different groups and moving, you know, attempting to be the first Prairie City USA, if we see other solar projects that haven't been so even achieving 100%, I don't know why we wouldn't, why would we shoot for anything less? I don't, I wouldn't, I don't know why we would do that. That would be my, would be my comments.
That vegetation is also good for the butterflies and the bees and that kind of stuff. And I know we're, we're doing a lot of that at the golf course now, there's going to be a lot of the area that's going to have that vegetation out there.
Well, just as, like, that's, and that's from the Prairie City USA project, and there's, I don't know, 17 acres or something on the golf course, but just the decreased emissions, the decreased manpower in mowing alone, it's just, it's good all the way around. It's less maintenance, it's less chemicals in the, in the air, it's in the ground, it's, it's good for runoff, it's just all the way around. So I think, I just think we're really strong, we need to strongly encourage as much native plantings as we possibly can. Eric, go ahead. Eric and Thompson. You're on mute.
All right, now I can, can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right. Yeah, I think the, the Natural Resource Advisory Committee is right there with you, Ben. I guess the one thing I would say is there are going to be, you know, roadways and things like that within the facility that obviously you wouldn't require to be vegetated. And so that could be included in there. But, you know, we did go ahead and put together a paper, a handout for you all to take a look at tonight, and I would just encourage you to go through that. You know, there, there are some things that could be included in conditional use permit or whatever ends up happening, you know, that says panels should be this high or spaced far enough apart where you can support lower growing plants, grasses, forbs. You know, they'd get enough light, all that kind of stuff. So I agree with you, Ben, I think it is practical and possible to happen through the majority of a site, obviously not 100% of the site, but, but, you know, all but the roads, I guess I would say.
Sure. And again, thank you, Eric. And again, I think that in any particular project, there may be areas, or there may be circumstances, you know, that would not allow for the planting of native species. But I think to set the bar any lower than, you know, that expectation, you know, we can always grant a variance if it's, if it's a hardship in a particular project. Scott.
Ben, I think a way to answer your question and follow the suggestion that Eric has made is to use the statement that they put in their handout that says, require all previous land area that is not roads or structures to be planted to native vegetation. So we get away from the concept of it being a percentage of this or that, which would be more work than it's worth to try and figure out anyway. Just say, anything that's not a road, make it natural vegetation, and I think that would answer it. It would change the line that you've got in there, Darren, but I think that's probably a better way to approach this question.
Absolutely. I like it, Scott, thank you. So, is there anything else in that? I mean, Eric, you mentioned Karen's here, Rudge here, a number of members of the natural resources. We do have a copy of your, of the memory you put together, we appreciate that. Are there any, are there other highlights that you wanted to specifically point out, Karen or Eric, from that document?
Karen wants to, but you're, she's on mute.
Karen Terry, please.
There you go, thank you. Just that, what we included in our, in our comments there also states that we would want someone, we would, we would not want the project owners developing the species list, that we would want somebody that's expert in native plants to do that, so that we get the benefits that we're really looking for for pollinators and other, all the other benefits that we get. So it should be a diverse and appropriate mix of species for the plants that they pick.
And I believe the second paragraph there talks about seed mixes from under the Department of Natural Resources?
Correct.
So does that, does that go to what you're talking, does that speak to what you're talking about?
It does, but I don't know if we need to have something that states who's going to oversee that, right? Could we get Soil and Water Conservation District to step in and, and just make sure that somebody is watching that? Who's going to say that, yes, there, that these are, this is a correct list of plants for this site? So I'd like for someone to be in charge of that.
Pardon? Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so in that document that we provided, and I really don't know a lot about this program, but in doing some research about solar farms, there, there is a Board of Soil and Water Resource Program that creates a beneficial habitat standard. And, and in there, they do talk about using Bowser or local SWCD staff to help with that, that review of an initial plan and also with some follow-up check-ins on the site, just to make sure that things are being managed correctly and, and that that prairie is still there five, 10, 15 years down the line. So, you know, it's, it's very possible, and again, I don't know a lot about that program, I haven't been involved with it personally, but I think that that's an opportunity to involve those folks like Karen was mentioning and, and get that professional experience and opinion on those seed lists, the maintenance that needs to occur, and all of those kinds of things.
Thanks, Eric. Other thought? Yeah, Scott.
The first thing that you brought up, Ben, was regarding the fencing. And I wonder if I could just hear a little bit about what the point of the fencing is. You talked about having a space at the bottom, wildlife-friendly and all that. Are we trying to keep out the deer, or are we trying to keep out the rabbits? I mean, to what degree are we trying to be friendly? What are we trying to do?
Sorry, I didn't mean to, I believe the intent is just to allow the natural flow of wildlife through the property. It's just to keep it as natural as possible.
So it would include letting the deer through, or not? I guess that's what I'm saying, well, if you're letting deer through, you're letting people through. I mean, if it's big enough for deer to get through, then what's the point of a fence at all? You know, that's the question, I guess I'm coming around to, is if we're trying to fence it, well, to what purpose? If we're going to make it so that any deer can get through there, well, then anything can get through there. So maybe there isn't a requirement to even fence?
There is not a requirement to fence it, fencing may be used. Most will use some sort of fencing. But it is, the way it's written, it's maybe, so.
It would seem to me that Otter Tail would prefer it fenced as a security thing, but if it's fenced in such a way that it isn't secure, then again, I don't see the point, so.
It depends on every site. It'd be, you know, a smaller site may make sense, a larger site maybe needs certain areas it does, if there's certain things in a certain area. Again, we're mostly concerned with the perimeter fencing, you know, they may have, there may be things with the interior lines where fencing would be utilized to protect that specific piece of equipment that we wouldn't be so concerned with the travel of wildlife getting through as much as, they can get in.
Somewhat, yeah. Sure. Go ahead, Eric.
You know, I guess with regards to fencing in the wildlife, unless you have a big tall fence and a lot of razor wire on top, you know, people are going to be able to get through it or over it, or whatever you want anyway. And I guess you could maybe use different types of fencing in different places. For example, along a highway that is heavily traveled, maybe you have one that is a little more difficult to get over or through. But in, in other places, you could have some fencing that is, you know, allows the wildlife better access through the property.
Yeah, Scott.
I'm going back to the, the, oh, natural, is that a requirement that they don't have to do that? Is this what you suggested?
The native plantings?
Yeah. Do you require in that, or is that just, if you do paint a pilot, like, they'd like to have some kind of guideline? Because I mean, let's say, I'm not trying to water them, we often put one, it's a deal breaker. Because I'm going to put, because we don't put the net break grass in, for the great night class, to be a deal breaker is what we have it in the ordinance we got. But, I don't know why it's there, because there's already been control of it. You know, so, and they're going to try and make it look the best they can anyway, whoever does. And of course, the grass, it's grown above it, the problem with the solar, so I just don't know why it's really, we're trying to garble it all up.
Well, no, I just think, I don't think it's garbage, I just think it's an expectation, I mean, it's expectation.
More law, more rules to follow by, they're just going to look at it.
There's, you can always get a variance.
So as you say, variance, why have it in?
Because the expectation is that it'll be native planting, just, I mean, if you.
They want, the city will want.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's good for the water control, it's good for the, it's pollinators, it's good for everything, it's everything. It's less maintenance, it's less cost to the.
So they let, let the customer, the owner decide what he wants to do, it's a must try to tell them.
They're going to have a hard time hearing you. So I think either mayor should repeat what you're saying, or you should stand under that dropdown mic, because they, they're not going to be able to hear you on the computer. Or, or there's a microphone on that table right there. I just, to go back, I just don't know what our reasoning is to make this, we gotta, they gotta have, you know, let, let the owner of the property who's doing this spend the money, and if they're going to try and make it the best they can, most efficient for them anyway, with just press, put more rules out there for them, it's just one more thing that, you know, just comes up as a cost.
Sure.
It's a deal breaker, for me, it's just that, why is it in there? If you get a tie for a variance and not have any.
Well, because the variance doesn't have to be approved, obviously, but I understand your point, I do. I think all these, all these ordinance, there's always, there's always a balance between, you want to encourage development, but you don't want to, you know, you don't, also want to protect, protect the environment, you want to protect the natural beauty of it. I mean, if we're just, I don't know, I don't think anyone wants 500 acres of gravel parking lot out there, right? So it's just a trade-off, that's all, I mean.
If it's maintained, what's the difference? You know, there's, if it's a.
The grass will be a part of less maintenance, so.
It's just like having a field on a road with grain and, or corn, and in the year, they move it off, it's there. But they have to keep the weeds in control, so what's, I don't get what the difference is. You know, we're, it's a, we're just trying to control something that we really shouldn't tell the owner of the, that's.
Sure. All right, thanks.
I understand where he's, I understand where he's coming from, I mean, we're saying it's far less maintenance. Well, in the city, we want far less maintenance, but if Otter Tail Power decides they want to plant grass and they want to mow it all down to keep the weeds down, as long as it's appealing and we don't have thistle and weeds and everything else, I mean, maybe we can, instead of just having one, we can give them, you know, two or three options. You either got to mow it and maintain it weeds, or you got to do this, or this, instead of just giving them one option.
Yeah, I think the other thing is, is like, there's other solar farms across the state, across the country that have used this as an opportunity to enhance the environment. That's why we wouldn't encourage that, I just, I don't understand. I mean, it's been proven, it's been proven as economically effective, it's, it's good. You know, I mean, I think if, if we don't encourage, I don't know why we wouldn't encourage that. And if someone wanted to come in and make a valid point where for their project, it's not economically feasible to go forward, then we'll consider a variance.
I looked at about five or six before I came tonight, and they're all short grass, and that's it. There's no native, nothing, just short grass, and those all over the different parts of the country. So that's where I got this from.
Okay. Sure. Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I want to get behind what Mayor Shire is saying on this. And because of what we're doing as a city, the efforts that we're putting forward to be the first Prairie City USA and the mayor's monarch pledge and the prairie plantings that we're doing and encouraging residents to do, I think this is an opportunity for us to make it mandatory on large-scale sites because it supports where we're going as a city and we get all those environmental benefits. And so if we have a lot of land that's going to be planted to something, if we can have it in our ordinance that they will plant it to natives, then we can work with them on getting that done. And we can certainly make that a partnership, we have a lot of expertise in this community about getting that done. So that's not an issue, it's, it's how do we, if we don't make it, if we don't put it in the ordinance, then they're not likely to even consider it, and we lose that opportunity. So if we put it in the ordinance, then we can work with them and get it done and make it a success. So I think it's very doable, I don't think it's a hardship on the project owners. I think it's an opportunity that they might not look at otherwise, so we can help them get there.
Thanks Ken. Yeah, Joe.
I was just wondering on these solar farms, how dense are the panels? And is the grass grow underneath them or, just curious?
Depending on the height of the panels, I believe. I think that if, if the panels are certain, and I'm not an expert, so I don't, but from what I understand, if the panels are a certain height off the ground, then the native, then the grass can grow up. But you don't want anything, obviously, that reflects the light away from the panels. That's the, I believe that's the trade-off, if you will. You get the, the greatly reduced maintenance by planting native plants, but you have to use a little bit more material to get the panels high enough so they can grow. I believe that's the trade-off. And again, I'm not an expert, but that's, that's, that's the trade-off. Red Lawson? Go ahead Rod.
I'd like to support what Karen is saying. There's enough expertise that we can get in the area to plant the appropriate type of native prairie. We have a, an ordinance that permits native planting and you don't have to keep it mowed to less than six inches. And I think that in the long run, this is going to save the, the company that's doing it a lot of money. We just have to be careful about what kind of heights we have so that they can mow it if they have to, but they don't have to have the, some types of grasses which are six feet tall. And that's where your experts can come in and tell you what kind of things to plant. So what I'm saying is, don't plant a bunch of plants that are like big blue stem that can be up to six foot tall. Don't require that they have the six inches or less lawn underneath the, underneath the solar panels. So that's my thought.
Thanks Rod. Other questions, comments, thoughts? Again, this is going to be in a draft form before the planning commission. You guys, it'll be a public hearing. You guys will have a chance to discuss it. And you'll have two readings at the council meeting, so. Oh, good evening Laurel, go ahead.
I don't want to take the conversation away from the solar farms, but when it's appropriate, I have some comments on the residential side of this and I don't, I don't want to change the flow of the conversation to do so.
Oh, you're good Laurel, go ahead. I think we're about wrapped up. I, I think unless there's a bunch more comments on the solar farm part of it, but, but did you have, just one second Laurel, go ahead Brent.
I just got one more opinion on this and I mean, this is, I've got a lot of people around town who have a very negative opinion of the native grasses. And with this in mind and with, I don't think that we should just say, hey, this is what you gotta do. And then if you don't like it, you gotta go and get a variance to do it. I would like to see a few more options as far as what is acceptable and let them pick instead of us saying, hey, this is going to save you money. And if they say, no, this is not how we want to do it, but this fits within what we want to do, I'd like to see two or three options of what can be done with the understanding that you have to keep your weeds under control.
Sure. Thanks Brent. Go ahead. Don?
I guess I would like to speak in favor of, of what, what you're proposing. I don't think we need to apologize as a city for wanting to maintain a certain appearance in, in the city. At the same time, we don't want to put undue burden on people who wanted help benefit the city, such as putting in a solar farm. So I think the idea that maybe the upfront cost is going to increase with me, using native vegetation, certainly the, the long-term maintenance costs are going to be weighed down compared to anything else that requires maintenance. So I would definitely be in favor of, of having that as part of the ordinance. And again, I don't think we should ever apologize for wanting to create a certain atmosphere in the city.
Thanks Don. Laurel, go ahead.
Okay, I just have a couple of things on residential and I think it's been good discussion tonight. And just like it's important for the city to not stop a project for a commercial, I think it's important that we match the solar goals for our homeowners. And I've done a little more research on the residential side. And when I look under section three and, or section C and number three for setbacks, it does say not to extend beyond the exterior perimeter of the building. There's a solar company that has taken great strides lately at Little Falls, Minnesota, that offers wall-mounted solar thermal units. They're three to four inches thick and they go on the vertical side of a home. They integrate into the exterior of the building. I just, I don't want to have an outdated ordinance before, as soon as we have it. I think that's where solar thermal is going, is vertical options as well. And the way that's worded right now, not extending beyond the exterior perimeter, would not allow for that under those settings. So I think that should be considered. Number four under section C, kind of assumes roof only. And with vertical surfaces being an option, we might want to look at wording in section four. Number seven, we're talking about freestanding accessory solar units. The 200 square feet for per lot. I think some lots in town are much larger, especially as we annex in and have larger lots added to the city. I think it would be nice to have an opportunity for people with larger lot sizes to possibly be able to do more. And maybe that's something where it's 200 square feet for such and such size lot. And then a conditional use permit or a variance would be allowed based on the square footage of your lot being higher, would be another area to consider. Not, section nine looks to have some contradictory wording to me with feeder lines, talking about they should be underground. And then it follows through with if it's close to an access point, it could be overhead. So I think we have some contradictory language in that section. And then section 11 talks about, in the version I had earlier, talked about 24 months for abandonment. And then the one we just got as planning commission about half an hour ago has 12 months. I think it's important that we consider, we have an elder population and a lot of times those homes end up in a trust or something, someone ends up in a nursing home and homes are maintained by family. My family's in that scenario right now with my in-laws, my grandparent, my husband's grandparents. Her house, we've been maintaining for five years and no one lives there as she's in a nursing home, but it can't be sold. I think it's important that we don't have an abandonment language that puts families in a scenario where they're maintaining a home, but maybe choose not to go forward with solar under those circumstances because removing solar would take away value from home. So maybe there's a way to permit or do something in that scenario to allow for that. And then I'll stop talking here, but under E, it talks about administrative review. Right now, on the solar farm side, we have a structure set up where it goes through city staff and building officials to planning commission to the, ultimately the city council. And I, I think for basic things, city, city planner makes the decisions, that's great. But I think we need to set up a system that gives, affords the same options to residential homeowners in this town to have a non-unilateral process that doesn't just rely on an official, but ends with a city board of some site as recourse or as an option for variances and things like that. And have that same structure in place for the residential side that's on the solar farm side. So I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Thank you Laurel.
Can I address a couple?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, thank you. So to the, the question on the side mounted, if you, when I, when I read it, it says roof mounted system shall comply with all building setbacks of the zoning district and not extend beyond the exterior perimeter of the building on which the system is mounted. So again, the intent there is so that you have your roof, you're not hanging panels off the roof. I think on the side mounted, it, that, that doesn't apply as long as your exterior setback is mentioned the property line. If it's mounted on the side, I would be okay with that. So I'd say we could do a side mounted and it wouldn't be a problem. It'd only be roof mounted where it can't extend beyond the roof wall. See, what was the other ones? The maximum area? I think that is something we can discuss. From an accessory structure standpoint, you're allowed 30% of your rear yard coverage, or 200 square feet, it's always agreed, whichever. So you're at 200 square feet of solar electric service. And according to minimum yard requirements of the district, which they're located, whichever is greater. Minimum yard requirements, yeah. So, I mean, that could be changed to say, you said, because right now you would be allowed, if you had a existing garage that was 20% of your rear yard, then 10% of that could be dedicated to accessory structure. Yeah, but if we had more than that, say if you only had 5% coverage with a garage or something like that, then you could have theoretically more and potentially more than 200 square feet. So we can either just change it to match, not to exceed the accessory structure requirements of the zone. Then that would be, again, that rear yard coverage allowance, which would then vary from parcel to parcel and upon the size or, right, so right now it's maxed out at that 200 square feet. So I, I could totally understand where you're coming from on that and, and open to suggestions on that.
I think again, you, maybe that, you know, you can look at that, bring it to the planning commission, have that just, you know, maybe further in this in-depth discussion there, um, if there's any changes that the planning commission suggests.
As far as the, and the last one then, I'll say the abandonment, yes, it's one year and the solar farm is one year as well. Does two years make more sense?
Well, in her scenario was, they're five years in, right? So under the current language, it says if it's been abandoned for over than a year, they require to take it down. Understand that right?
If it's abandoned or if it's non-functional or inoperative, so if it's.
So if somebody else is taking care of the property.
Right.
We're not making them do anything. If it's not functional, not being utilized, not being used, then we are.
Correct.
Yeah, and it's not going to affect your, like you said, the property value, because if it's non-functioning as it is.
There's no value.
Yeah, and if anything, it's going to actually drop your value, knowing that you have it on the side of your house.
All right. Any last comments, questions?
Regarding this question, as far as what's considered residential or not, it ties back to the conversation that we had earlier about the plantings underneath it. In a residential situation, if the city was to prefer native plantings, it would be nice to suggest that. But I don't know that we would want to require it in a residential area.
I think farms are different.
So I don't, I, I can't quickly find it. Maybe it's already in there. But if it's, if it's already clear in this, that the residential category isn't a requirement, whereas what we talked about earlier, making it a requirement for a commercial sized thing, then fine. But if not, I'd like to see a discussion there somehow.
I think it is because it's, I, I agree with you Scott. I think it is because it's in the, it's the, the native plantings is under specifically under the farm, the solar farm, is that correct then?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so what you're saying is, is, is right.
Yeah, I, I had one other comment, getting back to the solar farm part and it was related to wildlife. And, and there was one spot in there where it talks about the, the various lines that are found there and that in, in the residential one, they were preferred underground. In the solar farm one, they could be out, uh, above ground. And, and that could be a danger to wildlife, bird and other. So I did want to point that out to you all.
Thanks Eric.
Yep, it's right there in part C. Thank you.
And then I would just say too, to any members of the public that happen to be listening tonight, again, just to state, this will be come back in the draft form for a public hearing to the planning commission. Love the opportunity to comment. If you have things you would like to submit to the city staff for consideration before that document goes to the planning commission, feel free to get those to either Andrew, Claire or Darren, City Planner. And again, then we'll have two, two hearings presumably in March on this at the council. So there should be time for the public to participate. Yeah, Scott?
Earlier I was asking about the fencing and I wanted to have, there's one other element to that. If the point of the fencing was for what it looks like, doesn't it also overlap with the idea of screening? And I was expecting some conversation about that, it never happened. If we're going to require screening or not, and if we're going to require screening, you know, it has to be a certain height or a certain type of plant or a certain type of whatever. There would be some who would rather see a nice looking fence. There would be some who would rather see, you know, trees that are all 10 foot high and, and trimmed. I don't know that it's clear what's being suggested here. And I was looking for some more definition on that.
Yeah, okay. So the, the ordinance basically is identifying where screening is required in terms of along a property line that is not RA zoned, that is also residential is required. Does that sound? Beginning parts for farm. Yeah, on L, screen is required along lot lines bordering a different residential zoning district. So if it is R1 zoned next to this RA, it's required to stream that portion along residential dwellings, that 150 foot setback, it'd be required to stream along that line. And then it's encouraged then along the roadways as long as it doesn't interfere with the solar panel. Probably, to your point on the fencing, probably should add screening may consist of vegetation, berming or fencing. And to get to answer your question, the intent here is to kind of show where we want it. What you choose to use would be something we'd review in the CUP process. So if you're saying I might want to put a fence over here, trees here and a berm over here, all that would be laid out in the application, we'll review it at that time. And you could utilize it for all or as required. So you could then require to say, you know, the trees along this property line need to be four feet tall at planting or four feet tall by year two, however you want to write the condition. Or the fence must be at least six foot tall, not to exceed eight or something. Put all that into the CUP conditions. So that's kind of how the intent of this would be. This says where, what it looks like specifically would be followed up with the permit. That answer your question?
More or less. We're not defining it. We're asking for some suggestions and then it will be different for every project.
Correct.
I think I'm okay with that. I think there are some who would rather we defined it and said, you know, I don't want to see that. Require a something. So I just wanted to get that under discussion, see what people might think. Carlos waving over there. Claire, I'm sorry.
Eric, go ahead.
I think my question or, or comment with the, the fencing was answered there too, so thank you for that. But I did see Terry Mann's hand up on her screen and, and I'm guessing that she also wanted to point out the information that we provided about decommissioning plans. And I guess we should say, you know, we, when we did review this, when our committee reviewed this, we were very happy to see our main points already included in there. However, I think that each of those main points could be expanded on a little bit. And, and that's what that decommissioning plan does or, or discussion point in that flyer does is, is just points out a few other things that should maybe be considered and have been considered in other projects around Minnesota and, and, and the United States, so.
Thanks Eric.
I'm just curious, I mean, we're talking about different kinds of fences. Are fences like in the commercial thing going to be required? Or do they have the option not to put them in?
Or do they have the option not to put them in?
They have the option not to kick them in.
Yeah, because I mean, I can, you're talking how many hundreds of acres trying to fence that in, or were they just going to maybe want to go with you know, no trespassing signs and securities, you know, security system, which means then you wouldn't have to worry about it. You know, they just deal with the trespassers one at a time as they go, and then wildlife pretty much come and go as they choose.
I think, yeah, that's allowed under this proposed ordinance. Yeah, Terry, go ahead. Good evening.
I want to talk about the decommissioning stuff, and I think you're very vague in your, in your ordinance as to what that includes. I think that, having listened to Otter Power, they have some constraints for them in that project. But if another entity came in, I think you really need to spell out what you want. And it's the abandonment, I think, is where that's under. You don't have, you don't have a requirement for a decommissioning plan, but I think that you need that, especially for the solar farms. And that is where you would, you know, spell out the anticipated life of the project and the present cost of decommissioning. And how you created that. Hold on, I got to figure out how not to have this echo. And how you determine that cost. And then, you know, a surety that, that there was going to be funds to cover the cost of decommissioning. I don't think you want to be stuck with a number of acres of solar panels that all of a sudden the city is responsible for having to dispose of or regrade the land or any of those things. I think, you know, my example is the RTC and other things, that you have an empty building, and what the hell are you going to do with it? And this is a lot bigger than that, possibly a lot bigger than that. And that you review that, that decommissioning plan every three to five years, because conditions change. Cost of recycling, all those things change. That you, you know, you know, the details that I put in, that we put in the, in the flyer that the NRAC sent you, I think, lay that out. I don't see the three to five years. Oh, yes, it is, every five years. And so that that is covered, and so that the city isn't responsible, the tax, the local taxpayers are not responsible for cleanup. So that's, that's mostly where that is. Also, that recycling should be required versus disposal, even if the cost is somewhat higher for recycling, because that, again, is a better use of resources, and I think we have to always consider that. And there's, and there's references and resources there that you can refer to on those things that we included.
Thank you, Terry.
Can I maybe, so like, this is a bad example, but, you know, when we did our disposal up there, permits would be permitted, and we had to go through a decommissioning through the permits that we pulled. If it's not something, would be the same thing, there's guidelines within the permits, they're going to have to pull to do the project, or they're bound to decommissioning through the state.
Depending on who regulates the entity that installs the solar panels, the way I understand, is that correct?
Yeah, for your honor members, for the investor owned utilities that are regulated by the PUC, there would be some level of requirement from the PUC to, you know, keep track of depreciation and end of life asset plans and some of those sort of things. But again, we're creating an ordinance here that would encompass any and all projects, whether it be, you know, the local utility company or for lack of a better term, a fly by night, fly by night company that's trying to make money off of these types of things. And I think your ordinance needs to, needs to contemplate and consider all of those entities. Like, I agree with what Terry said, you need to make sure that the community, the local community is not stuck holding the bags.
Absolutely.
If something were to go bankrupt, or a company went defunct that came along and put one of these in the ground. Now, I'll say I don't have concerns related to Otter Power in that regard, but again, we're not making this ordinance for Otter Power, we're making it for
Exactly.
any project.
Well, and then maybe there's a way, I don't know if there's a way, but if they're not regulated by the PUC, if an entity was, I mean, right, like, if there's not sureties put in place by another governing body, I would sure think that, you know, Terry's points are spot on. We're not going to put the taxpayers at the risk on something like that, so.
You know what I think?
I don't know how we address that, but I think we'd need to.
Yeah, your honor, I was going to say, I think we could spell out in this ordinance, we could come up with some language that would, you know, that would just indicate that utilities that aren't regulated in this regard by the PUC would have these more stringent requirements. And obviously, we need some level of requirements for, you know, regulated utilities as well, because I think the local taxpayers and the local community deserves to know what the game plan is and what the risk is. But I think we can differentiate, you know, the real level of detail between investor owned regulated utilities and others.
Sure, and that's something we can work on some language, and again, bring it to the planning commission. I know the planning commission still has a meeting, so we'll we'll kind of take final comments if anyone has them, then we're going to wrap up here, but we'll let you guys get to your meeting. Scott, go ahead.
One final comment. One of the other notes that was in the things that were presented by Eric and Karen included a comment on agrivoltage, basically the possible use or introduction of animals into the solar farm area for the purposes of grazing or livestock, you know, whatever it might be. And it ties together some of the things that we've talked about regarding fencing and regarding what you plant. Because if you're going to plant something that we want animals to eat, it's not necessarily going to be native grasses. If you're going to put up a fence that you want to keep the animals in there, it's probably not going to be wildlife friendly. And so I think it's important to think about what Scott had said about whether we require a lot of things and put a bunch of rules on this, given the use that's being offered, and be given the plan that's being offered. Let the plan get put together and let the CUP process go, and then if it's going to have animals in it, well, then it needs this kind of fence and this kind of planting, and if it's not, then it's a different kind of a plan. And then let's look at these other options for how we might try to encourage native plantings, or how we'd like to, you know, be wildlife friendly. I don't know that what we've seen, given this specific project with Lake, that they've addressed the question of whether they're going to make a livestock farm up or not. But that being an option for any future project, this, it seems like we ought to allow for it, and I'll leave it at that.
I guess I would just comment, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Scott, although I would say if we set expectations, I don't think anyone can disagree, going back to the native plantings, that that's good for the environment, that's good all the way around. We set that as an expectation with the ability to have a variance. So if someone wanted to come and make the argument that for this particular project, we're going to use the the agrivoltage, I don't even know what that term is, but anyway, if we're going to have livestock grazing on the land, and it's going to be good for everybody, then we're like, you know, it makes financial sense, it's good for the environment, good for all these reasons, then I think that a variance or through the conditional use permit, I think. But I do, the whole point of this ordinance is to set some sort of standards that we expect, and that we want to protect, you know, the community, so. Anyway, I think that, you know, there's good discussion here, we're going to have three more opportunities to have some discussion. So I think, staff, do you feel like you have enough to work with to at least bring back a draft to the planning commission?
I, your honor, council members, others, I do, I think we have enough, this was valuable and a good discussion. I do want to acknowledge, before we wrap up, that Otter Power submitted comments as well, and those were provided to all the groups on the call this evening. And, you know, we're sorting through those comments as well, there are some things that don't change, you know, structurally, the ordinance that we think will be incorporated or should be incorporated. So we'll continue to use solid judgment as we work through those comments, coupled with the discussion that we had here this evening. And that draft that was brought to the planning commission here in the next couple of weeks will incorporate some of those things. I want to acknowledge that Otter Tales given us valuable feedback. I'm not suggesting that we just take it and run with it, but we'll work through that as well as we're giving this a final call through, and know that some of those suggestions do actually improve the ordinance that's being proposed.
Well, I think it's worth mentioning too, that if you look at the proposed change of Otter Tail Power, the proposed ordinance, we looked at the CUP, the model ordinance, and then the comments from the Natural Resource Advisor Committee, they're not that far off. It's not, it's not like an inseparable divide. We can get there, we can come up with an ordinance that works for our community and protects the environment, and is good for the development of the community as well. So I think, I know we'll get there, and we'll have three more opportunities to discuss it, so. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Again, submit any comments to city staff, we'll make sure we get them, but this will be before the planning commission, hopefully, for the next two to three weeks.
I got an email from a guy about grain.
I think it's muted there.
We're going to talk about it.
I think we're ready to call the meeting to order for the planning commission, so. Want to take a roll call?
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, I'm here.
Yes.
Yep, here.
Kelsey?
Here.
Here.
Eric. Vern's here.
We have a form.
All right, thank you. In our packet, we received a copy of the last, last time we met's agenda. Or approve the agenda, never mind. Anybody have any corrections or additions to the agenda? Otherwise, we could take a roll call to approve. Can we just approve, or need to take a roll call?
Should we make a motion approve? Motion approve.
Motion approve, we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
All right.
I, I.
Well, I.
Sounds like everybody's in favor. Then we've received the minutes in our last packet. Are there any corrections or addition to the November regular meeting minutes?
This is Laurel, I'll make a motion to approve.
Can we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second roll call? Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
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 Scott?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Then we'll get into the public hearing. Per review, development twin home split CUP.
All right, Claire, you want to go to the PDF and go down to the public hearing section? So this application is a conditional use permit. This is to split an existing duplex into a twin home. This is the last of the similar requests we've seen in the past on this. So these are the last units. The application was submitted along with the survey that you found your packet. I also have the party wall agreements, it's the exact same as before, just changing of the addresses. So again, all this is doing is putting the property line down the middle of the building where that shared wall is. So we've published this in the paper back in July ninth. Notes were mailed out, excuse me, January ninth, sorry, notes were mailed to January eighth. We're here tonight. The reason why this is considered a multiple dwelling unit sold individually, so that requires a conditional use permit, and also the party wall agreement. Again, our conditional use standards here in code. And again, these, this is the development that was, we saw the plat last year, year before. This is the last of the duplexes to be split. Here are some proposed findings for your consideration with the condition to abide by the party wall agreement. It's very similar to, I think, the rest, the last.
Same as last.
Same as the last ones. With that, that is all I have on this. Again, it's the exact same as what we've seen before on these.
Okay, thanks. Any comments or questions from the planning commission? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. If anyone from the public wants to address the commission, please state your name and address. Do we have anybody on? Okay, there's nobody on, so we'll bring it back for a vote. What's your wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second that. Based on, okay, based on the.
We have a second, so the motion is to approve based on the findings of the, of city staff. Roll call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any upcoming applications, Darren?
So we will have a variance request from the Rivers Edge Development to encroach on the ordinary high water river setback fifty feet. to encroach on the ordinary high water, the river setback, um, 50 feet is required. Um, they're asking on two points of that building, uh, the corners to encroach, uh, it's a 10 or 15 feet on either side. Um, so that request will come at our February 22nd meeting, um, so we will have that.
Okay, thank you, we'll go into old business, B6 zone and light industrial use discussion.
Okay, so this is, um, the, what you have here in the back of the packet is, um, an ordinance that would add, um, indoor, part C, indoor recreation in section two, such as trampoline parks, skating and archery. And then light industrial uses, um, as a conditional use in the B5 and B6 zone. Um, as long as that light industrial use, um, there'd be no outside storage, materials or goods, uh, unless allowed as a retail use in the, um, is permitted in that zone in conjunction with the manufacturing business. What that means is, is, um, if there's a permitted use within the zone that allows outdoor storage of goods, um, then that, you can utilize that. But if not, the intent here is to not allow, um, you know, a, a large outside storage of, say, wood products. Um, if you're going to have a wood product or metal, if it's a metal, um, product, um, it should be all stored inside, um, in this area. Um, unless like I said, there is a, um, permitted use that would go with, that would allow outside storage. So hopefully that's clear. Um, and then no use that produces fumes, exhausts or other nuisance conditions outside of the structure. And that would be a conditional use, that'd be something we'd be reviewing at the planning commission level, um, in this area. Light industrial, the definition of what is light industrial, again, um, is added here at the very top, we'd add this to a definition. Um, what does that look like? Um, it'd be a use similar, but not limited to like food processing, contractors, textile, wood products, tool and die printing, uh, pharmaceutical machinery, manufacturing or assembly. Uh, but not anything that, um, takes industrial processing from raw materials or other heavy industrial uses. So, um, that is the, uh, intent here. This again would be in the B5 and B6, which is that shopping center district. Any questions on this? Uh, this is something we have discussed, um, in the past. Um, and, uh, looking to have a public hearing on this, um, soon to then incorporate within the code.
So do the property owner, I'm sorry.
Well, Laurel, I'll ask my question afterwards, sorry.
Sorry, do the property owners get notified or is it just a public posting on this or how does this work? I know, I know there's not a ton of them.
So for, for the ordinance?
Yeah.
Or, okay, so for the, for the ordinance, um, this gets noticed in the paper? And because it being this is a city initiated ordinance amendment, um, once it's in the paper, we have a public hearing on it. That public hearing, we invite everyone to speak, um, on the changes. And then it goes to council for first and second reading. There's no individual, because it affects the entire city, uh, with everything, all the property within the B5 and B6 zone. Um, this would be, um, a change that would be allowed, so there is no specific property that this would affect. But if someone were to apply for a conditional use permit in the B6 zone for virtue of this ordinance amendment, after that, after it's proved, then there would be, uh, everybody within 350 feet of the specific parcel that is requesting it would be getting notified.
Any other comments?
I'm good.
Okay. Do you have any other city planner updates, Darren?
Um, well, I guess for this, uh, are, are we okay with this? Um, if so, I would, I would, um, uh, then say, bring this to, if we are okay with this, then I would say we'll bring it to the public hearing. But I just wanted to.
Yeah, I, I think everybody's okay with it, because based off the questions.
One thing I was, when you come to that public hearing, is there going to be examples, I guess, what I'm, they're going to ask for examples if somebody comes. I'm going to ask for an example, I'm not going to ask you now, because I don't.
What example would be things such as limited food processing?
No, no, examples in town where, where it's located in town.
Oh, anything that's B6, so examples would be the, the mall, Mills Fleet, Sunmart, Kmart, that area.
Okay, just that, that, that general area and then I suppose in front of Walmart in front of, uh.
That's industrial.
That's industrial.
Walmart, I believe is industrial. I can pull up the map next meeting though.
Bring a map next, yes, we can look at.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at too, and it's just, I think we need to be prepared to be able to tell people where exactly this is at the public hearing.
Yep, can do.
So I think we're generally okay with this.
Yep, just a little clarification in that it may just be a, the way I'm reading it. But, uh, the limitation on using materials, raw materials that require refining, uh, a furniture maker, just taking raw lumber and refining a making, making furniture with it, does that, is that, is that called, considered refining raw material or is that, uh?
To me lumber has been processed.
Yeah, so the intent here is to exclude basic industrial processing from raw materials. So the intent would be more along the lines of, well, to answer your question, yeah, if you're taking a two by four and turning it into a table leg, um, is that a raw material to, uh, and I would say no. But if, if someone want to take a tree and create two by fours, no. Does that make sense? The raw material would be the tree, the log coming in, we're not going to stack wood and then make two by fours in this area. But we would allow two by fours being brought inside the building, be stored to turn into furniture. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it does for me, and that's what I kind of assumed. What I'm, what I'm wondering is, without making it too cumbersome, is there a way to make sure that that's clear in the ordinance itself? Because otherwise it becomes then a judgment call. So, and I don't know if that, if you want that, that's just my question.
The other part of that would be is if, uh, if there is a use that would not meet those eight criteria questions of the CUP. So if you felt that, um, you know, if there would, if one of the questions was answered no because of the way the material was handled and processed, would justify a denial of the CUP request. But to your point, I guess it would be, yeah, to be, say no to it before it gets to that point. You know, um, and that's where, um, the, you know, the way the language is, is, um, what we're doing here would be includes limited intens, intensity levels of manufacturing and assembly activities primarily from previously prepared or replying materials or from raw materials that do not need refining. Warehousing of, uh, of produced products on site with limited direct public access. Research and development, packaging, associated offices or similar uses as determined by the city planner. Um, so that also hopefully helps narrow down, you know, if you're going to make what, what the intent here is.
So let's do the progression here, we're talking about the illustration of a furniture maker. And it's, it's acceptable for the furniture maker to buy and move on to the location. Uh, lumber that's been milled somewhere else and it's just stacked and dried and then used. It's not acceptable to haul a sawmill up and set it up and, and haul logs in and cut it up because that would be refining.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. If the intent here is, obviously this is in our retail zone, so, uh, a good example would be that, you know, furniture maker that wants to process, create and then retail all in one, this would be an area for that to happen. Or.
Very good, yeah, I mean, I don't know what kind of examples you could put there, but there, that you couldn't be permitted, I mean, you wouldn't want a, a faunery or a
Right.
Um, certainly, uh, whether they make insulation or they make, uh, or a sawmill, like a situation like that.
Sawmill.
So really, anything, anything that you can't take a raw material and make it into something that would be not permissible.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, good, so I think again, we're generally okay with it.
Okay.
Good to go. Um, any other updates, Darren?
Um, no, uh, or wait, um, no.
Okay. Then we'll adjourn unless there's an objection.
No objection, when's our next meeting?
When's the next meeting?
Yes, we have our special meeting on
Monday.
Monday.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, Monday at five o'clock, we have the special meeting.
Okay.